I call the November 3 regular meeting of council to order. Councilperson Kirchner will give the invocation this evening.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Krieger.
Here.
Mr. Landig.
Here.
Mr. Marne.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
And the minutes of the October 19 regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landig.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
And finally, the minutes of the October 27, 2021 special meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landig.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Public hearings, we have none. Tabled legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 21-0-068.
An ordinance to authorize transfers of funds, advances of funds, and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. Members of council, this ordinance has three main sections. Firstly, in section one, it authorizes a rather large, several rather large permanent transfers of cash. Worth pointing out, the largest is a $3.15 million transfer to fund 50% of the medical self-insured fund. And then a couple TIF transfers to close out a project and make a payment on Wood Norton Way. And then finally, a two-town detention basin also close out. Section two authorizes over $4 million in temporary cash advances out of our general fund. And these are mostly to fund capital projects temporarily, and the advances will be returned when they're legally required. And then finally, section three encompasses all of the necessary appropriations to do all these transfers and advances, as well as any small grant funds that need required more money. I recommend approval of the entire ordinance. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landig.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-068 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-069.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to Mark Haynes Construction, Inc., for the Lagoons Armor Stone Revetment Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, and council is aware that this project has been cooking for a few years now, and that it's been a real, I don't want to say hassle, but it's been complicated to get approval on. And the city engineer to my right has done a good job with his staff in finally getting the finish line on this. And as a matter of fact, it was even after we took bids on this that we just now received final OD and our approval for this project. So we're good to go. We received a very positive bid on this, much lower than the engineer's estimate. And as council is aware, I think, you know, the best part of this project is that the wait probably helped us in the long run because some money became available through the last state capital budget through a grant program. There was $5 million set aside for all of the state to bid on competitive projects for shovel-ready sites. We received $930,000, so almost $1 million of that $5 million statewide is coming back to Mentor. So we're not quite sure if we'll get the full amount because the project came in lower, although the project specs are exactly the same as they were. And Mr. Swigger is going to tell you all about it.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. Four bids were opened on October 15 for the Lagoons Armor Stone Revetment Project. Bids received for the project range from a low bid of approximately $1,080,000 to a high bid of approximately $1,700,000. The engineer's opinion of probable construction cost is $1,300,000. The project will lengthen an existing stone revetment wall along the western Lake Erie shoreline of the Mentor Lagoons Marina by approximately 377 linear feet. The total length of the old and new revetment wall, once in place, will be approximately 960 feet. In addition to the revetment wall, 1,200 linear feet of earthen mound will be constructed along the north side of Dock A Access Road. The mound will be approximately 3 feet high and 14 feet wide and provide additional protection from wave run-up onto the access road. The substantial completion date for the project is scheduled for April 1 of 2022 with a final restoration date of May 13. The low bid was received from Mark Haynes Construction, Incorporated of Norwalk, Ohio, whose bid was found to be in conformance with all contract requirements. It's therefore recommended that a contract be awarded to Mark Haynes Construction in the amount of $1,081,939. Just to let you know, Mark Haynes has completed several projects for the city in the past, including Phase 1 of this revetment project, the stone revetment at the Mentor Beach Park, Springbrook Park, recent construction project, Two-Town Ditch, and the detention basin behind Zappatellis. Thank you.
Counsel.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mark.
A couple questions from administration. How did the state come up with 377 feet to length in the wall? Remember, we started at 1,000, and then we went down to like 800, then 600, then 500, and then we're going to make it 499, and we have 377.
I mean, a little bit of that was the fact that, under the nationwide permit, we're basically limited to 500 linear feet. So they were counting part of the past revetment in this construction project. So they deducted that amount from the 500 feet that they would allow us to do under the nationwide permit. If we wanted to go over that amount, we would have to apply for an individual permit, and there would be a lot longer delay and a lot more money invested into getting the permitting.
Then the portion of it that's down A Dock, you know, running north to south, I mean, we don't need them in the future for an O-K, right? Because that's our property and everything of that nature.
Mounding along A Dock?
The mounding, this part of this.
As long as we stay out of any wetlands north of Dock Road.
Which, of course, is all getting wetter because the lake's getting wider.
So, you know, this part of the, I think that this part of the project that we were hoping to add was, I think, maybe 600 feet originally. 1,400 feet was the amount that we desired to continue, to do what we felt would essentially complete that protection, both of that marina area and then extending up beyond into, toward the, toward the preserve. Virtually no way they will approve that amount in the, in the future. We've talked to them, you know, Councilman Kirchner and I talked to some of the people at the Army Corps Office in DC at one point about alternative means of shoreline protection, different engineering models. But, you know, we're, we're a long way away from getting, advancing that protection along the shore. But this is a necessary step. Good part of this project is that despite the fact that it's not as far as we wanted to go, it will go a long way to protect the integrity of the marina, and that was the goal of this and the first phase.
And then, I guess, the last question. Did we inform them that they gave us money before they approved our project?
Yes.
Would they have a response to that?
We hope it helped.
Yeah, I hope that it would have improved their, their timeliness.
Some other different floor in the building gave us money, and the other floor said no? Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Kirchner.
Ken, is the, the revetment, it's going to be continuation of the revetment that's already there, correct?
Yes.
Are we, is it going to hug the shoreline, or is it going to go in a different, will there be water behind it, or will it be up against the shore? Because, you know, that shoreline changes on a weekly basis there, so.
There'll be some wetland areas behind it, but we will, we'll hug the, the existing shoreline as closely as we can. It won't be offset, and it won't be pushed, you know, well into the.
And then, sort of on an unrelated issue, can we get an update maybe at the next meeting about the study that's been ongoing with the Corps on the channel for the last, what, two, three years now? That they told us in Washington would be about a year and a half?
Yeah, I actually can give you an update on that now. We did just get, we got an update, I think, about a week ago. And surprise, surprise, it'll probably be what another year of study was estimated.
I would say yes.
And I think the cost of the, of the study is likely to be double what was originally anticipated, so we'll be talking with them about that as well.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Dowling.
Just a comment. I received a postcard about two weeks ago from the Corps asking for input on it, so I assume everyone in that area received the same thing, so.
They're at this, you know, they're, they also delivered to us a few example alternatives that they're considering. It's a very much a draft form, and they, but it looks like they're going to be recommending, in all likelihood, the lowest-cost alternative, which was kind of the first alternative, which is kind of like that, that jagged angle off. But, yeah, we'll, we'll be able to give you, I can give you a more detailed update than that, and schedule-wise as well, before our next meeting.
And related to the project at hand, the second element, is this mound along the trail 1,400 feet or some long? What are the benefits and purpose of that part of the project?
Well, we weren't able to extend the, with 377 feet, we couldn't go to the far, I guess, upland area of the preserve area. So we weren't able to fortify the shoreline far enough to keep the water from coming around the wall. We'll have a gap from where the wall's going to end to where the, I guess, the target shoreline connection was, so that the, the mounding will help protect the marina, especially the Dock Road area, from wave surges that would get around the, the revetment wall. So that will, that will do the.
You're seeing that now. If you drive up there along A Dock, you see it surging behind it now. So this will, this, this extension will improve that situation, but it won't eliminate it. But what it will eliminate is the likelihood of it breaching if it gets so high. They feel as though the 3-feet berm will provide a second level of protection. And those are, now would be considered protective wetlands, so there's no eliminating that going forward.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Dowling.
Just a quick question. Do we know how many feet approximately we're away from Sawyer's Point yet? How many linear feet roughly?
I think it's around 2,000 feet.
Okay.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landig.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-069 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-070.
An ordinance authoring the execution and delivery of a mentor incentive grant with Sunny's Diamond Shine.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very pleased to bring to council's attention a new business that, again, is seeking out Mentor as its place for relocation. We're excited about this, and Mr. Malicek, could you please give some detail?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. Sunny's Diamond Shine is relocating its light manufacturing operations, which are currently located in Wickliffe, to the old Orbis Building at 9050 Tyler Boulevard, which was, until recently, our largest industrial vacancy. They're going to renovate the 110,000-square-foot building, new sprinkler, firewall systems, racking, chemical storage. The cost of the project is going to be approximately $17.9 million. 37 jobs will move with, with this relocation. Estimated $3 million in new payroll will be added. And then over the next, the term of the, of the MiG, which is 10 years with a 10% payroll tax grant in 2022, and that exceeding up to 40% in '23, 50% in 2024 through 2031, because it will hopefully be doubling that amount of employees from 37 to almost 80 by the time that the, the grant expires.
Counsel.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landig.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-070 has been approved. Resolution number 21-R-115.
Resolution declaring the appointment of Pamela A. Petrowitz as Assistant Clerk of Council and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Seaman, could you just comment on what this council will accomplish with this resolution?
Yes, Mr. President. Members of council, pursuant to code, the Assistant Clerk of Council is a, is a direct employee of the council. In order to hire her, this resolution would be necessary for enactment here at a public meeting.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landig.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Resolution number 21-R-115 has been approved. Second reading, there are none. Third reading, there are none. Managers report. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council. Council, we have a pavement open cut request from KPS Commercial Construction for a new six-inch sanitary lateral under the pavement at 9595 Diamond Center Drive. It's a 10-by-8 open cut in the drive lane that you, the new right-turn lane that is in front of Menards. It's for the new Jiffy Loop. Unfortunately, we've looked at this, and even though that's essentially new pavement, there really isn't any other way to accomplish it. So I ask for your approval.
Need a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landig.
Yes.
Mr. Marne.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Please continue, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. This year's Veterans Day Ceremony will be held on Thursday, November 11, at 11:11 a.m. at the Veterans Memorial in front of the Mentor Senior Center. Please contact the Recreation Department for details or consult our website. Mentor Police's Phila Cruiser will take place on Sunday, November 14, at the Tyler Boulevard Giant Eagle, from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. Beginning today, State Route 306 traffic over Interstate 90 will be shifted to one-half of the bridge for the deck replacement project. So one lane of traffic will be maintained in each direction for the duration of the project that is estimated to be completed by October of 2022. So a long haul there for, for that project. Also, Council, Lake Shore Boulevard Sewer Linings Improvements Project contractor Insiroform Technologies will be lining aging sanitary sewer mains along various routes. The project, which is expected to start this week, will utilize trenchless construction methods to install the new pipe inside the existing sewer at the, at several locations throughout the city, actually four locations, from the intersection of Summerwind Lane and Marshview West through an easement across Becker Road, from the north end of Lynx Road through easements to Richards Drive and north along Richards Drive, from the intersection of Sarah Court and Lenora Drive through easements to Corridori Road, then on to Lake Shore Boulevard, and then along Lake Shore Boulevard between Corridori Road and State Route 44. So we don't know if this will create any significant traffic problems at this point. I don't know if your office has gotten a, a traffic plan yet.
Right now, they're scheduled to use a temporary traffic signal on Lake Shore Boulevard, and they'll be using flaggers everywhere.
So, a little cumbersome, but in the long run, this is a good project. It'll cut down on the rainwater and that that is now getting into the sanitary system. So we look at any improvements by Lake County Sewer as good ones. That's all, counsel.
Clerk's correspondence.
Nothing to report.
Commission Committee reports. Meeting minutes, Municipal Plan and Commission, September 30, 2021. Old business. Hearing none. New business.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mark.
Want to congratulate the Mentor High School football team on another successful season. Coach Matt Gray and his staff and the players gave it a heck of a run for all the diversity that they've had to deal with, and the band, and the trainers. I mean, even all the other fall sports. It's been a tough year and a half, and just to see the kids back out there and, you know, trying to be kids again and trying to achieve that goal, you know, it was a good fall, all in all. So congratulations to everyone involved.
Any other new business? Persons before council. We have two tonight. I will call them in alphabetical order. It's the same topic. I would ask that you refrain from repeating the previous speaker, the, the second speaker, that is. Mr. Philip Grano, please come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. You will have four minutes to speak.
My name is Philip Grano. I live at 9155 Idlewood Drive. I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I understand that ordinance number 21-0, or 0-059, was passed at the last meeting, and if I would have known about it, shame on me, I would have been here. I would have talked about it then, but I'd like to at least talk about it a little bit tonight and hope that you reconsider changing the penalties that you. I posted this on the news, on Facebook, on the Mentor Community page. At the time, I was thinking, maybe I'm crazy, because I looked at what the penalties were, what the, what the law was, and I go, maybe it's me, and I'm just, I don't get it. So I, I raised a question on, on Facebook, had over 80 responses, and, and the question was, do you agree with council on what they, what they? 82 responses, one person agreed. Everybody else, some of them blatant about it, came out and did not, did not agree what was done. I live on Idlewood, as I said earlier. There are 34 trees on tree lawns on our street. Of the 34 trees, 24 of them are causing sidewalks to be damaged. And here are pictures. I'm happy to pass them out if you'd like to see them. The sidewalks are pretty bad, and these are caused by the trees. Now, you can tell me that, yeah, in 2023, they're coming out to Idlewood, and they're going to fix those that are, that are there, okay, that are caused by the tree, the trees. The fact is, is that we got 24 of them now, they're in violation. And two years from now is, is a long time to be waiting for those. My sidewalk was repaired less than 10 years ago because of the tree, okay? I've got to do it again now. Being a person who follows rules, I called the city, I had a person come out, take a look at it. I wanted to cut down the tree. I said, let me put up another tree. This is causing problems for my sidewalk. It's happened before, it's happening again. It was denied, and it was denied because the tree wasn't diseased, and that seems to be one of the few major, or the major rule of why trees in our area are not cut down on tree lawns, are not allowed to be cut down. I've owned my house for over 31 years. My house and yard are very well-maintained, as some people can tell you. Didn't us property owners have a say-so on whether a tree can be taken down on a tree lawn? Right now, we have virtually no say-so. It's, it's if you guys decide that we can take it down. All the yards on our street are nice. I live in a beautiful neighborhood. There is one piece of property that isn't. That piece of property has weeds on it, and a piece of property has four diseased trees on it. According to your website, lawns and landscaping should be maintained so not to cause a negative effect in a neighborhood. Properties are, property owners were reminded that we maintain chub, trubs and she, trub, blah, 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 trubs and trees, okay? The property that's not maintained is owned by the city. That's the one piece of property that if you come there, you can tell right away, and I can show you pictures of what the grass looks like. It's all weeds.
Do you want me to get that?
I can show you a picture of the trees. They are diseased. And so when I, and the way I'm, why, reason why I'm bringing this up is that now it seems that the city is do-as-I-say, not-as-I-do. And looking at, those of you who have changed that law, let me ask you, how many of you have trees on your tree lawn? And of those trees, how many of them are big, tall trees that can potentially? How many of you don't have trees on your tree lawn?
Mr. Grano, it's four minutes. If you could take a few seconds and wrap up with your final point.
What I'm asking the city to do is to take a look at the penalties. You're going to make it a misdemeanor, you're making it a misdemeanor. I'm a criminal if I cut down a tree without a permit, and, and I would just like you to reconsider that. And one last thing, real quick, is your codified ordinance of Mentor 51409.99 talks about the, the fines, and the, the largest fine for a misdemeanor is $1,000. That's the largest one. And that's for, that's a, that's for a first-degree misdemeanor. Your guys are going to charge up to $2,000. And I, and I have to wonder, is, how did that authority come to be able to do that?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Mr. Paul Prince, please. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Paul Prince. My address is 8621 Johnny Cake Ridge in Mentor, Ohio. I'm a resident of Mentor about 33 years or so, same place. I saw Philip's post on Facebook the other day and read it. First, I had no one about the reordinance, and I piped up and said, no, I don't think it should have been changed that way. I think that the fine was increased significantly. It sounded draconian to me, and the adding of the misdemeanor clause, I thought, was very draconian also. And I didn't agree with that. And I said, you know, well, people should go to council and talk about it. So that's why I'm here, because I piped up and said so. In trying to look at the legislation that was passed, reading through the minutes and things, I noticed a couple things. I noticed that Mr. Philip Hack, I believe, mentioned was talking about that they get lots of requests. People want to cut down trees because they have lots of problems. They're old, they're big, they're damaging their sidewalks. And he said they get a great deal of requests. Generally, they do not honor most of them. Boy, the residents, I'm sure, are not happy with that. The law director talked, and he's talked about that the current penalty provision has been abused. That's because the city won't work with the person, the resident, and come up with a plan to solve their problem. They say, no, some people are abusing the system. I don't support abusing the system, but I think the city should work better with the residents. When the residents come and request, hey, I've got a problem with this tree, try to figure out a better solution. The council president noted, noted that when the sidewalks are damaged and broken up, the resident is still liable if someone gets hurt on the sidewalk. Councilperson Krueger mentioned, however, the city will not let them remove the tree, the homeowner. Seems to me that if somebody goes into Wildwood Park and cuts down a city tree there, the provisions you outlined sound pretty good to me. Pretty grievous. Somebody cutting down a tree on their tree lawn, if they didn't know about the ordinance, I think it's a little stiff. If they're trying to get around the ordinance and abuse the system, I would ask the city to try to work with the residents better, come up with a plan, work together, and solve the residents' problems, and avoid having to penalize them that way. My comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Thank you, both gentlemen, for coming out and commenting on ordinance that was passed at our last meeting. I would like, in courtesy, just the law director, because there were two components to the changes, they were actually to make the ordinance a little more gracious, if you will, as well as address the penalty part. So, Mr. Zeeman, could you summarize what council accomplished passing the ordinance?
Yes, Mr. President. Part of it was responsive to residents' complaints that there really wasn't enough latitude, given the administration and the ordinance as structured, to take into account various factors that may warrant a tree coming down, albeit perhaps healthy, and replaced by another approved specimen, species of tree. The penalty section, it was an unclassified misdemeanor before it was amended. It is an unclassified misdemeanor now. And we ran into quite a lot of circumstances, which I think I've detailed in the prior public meetings, relative to contractors who were required to get a license prior to removing a street tree, who just failed to do that. And so, the current penalty of $500, you know, was just not a deterrent to those individuals. And there were many instances where folks just wanted to take down a perfectly healthy tree. There were no extenuating circumstances. They were denied a permit to do so, and they did it anyway. And $500 was simply not a deterrent for those folks. It was simply the cost of doing something which the law did not provide. So I did advocate, for purposes of deterrence and enforcement, that the penalties be increased. And again, there's no jail that can be associated with this. It is strictly a financial penalty and restitution potentially, obviously, if a public tree is taken down. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to revised Code Section 12122 to consider the purchase of property for public purposes in order to prevent premature disclosure of information that would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest.
And I'll second exactly what Ray said.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Resolution number 21-0-070 has been approved. Resolution number 21-R-115. Resolution declaring the appointment of Pamela A. Petrowitz as Assistant Clerk of Counsel and declaring an emergency. Mr. Zeeman, could you just comment on what this council will accomplish with this resolution?
Yes, Mr. President. Members of council, pursuant to code, the Assistant Clerk of Counsel is a direct employee of the council. In order to hire her, this resolution would be necessary for enactment here at a public meeting.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Resolution number 21-R-115 has been approved. Resolution number 21-R-115. Resolution declaring the appointment of Pamela A. Petrowitz as Assistant Clerk of Counsel and declaring an emergency. Mr. Zeeman, could you just comment on what this council will accomplish with this resolution?
Yes, Mr. President. Members of council, pursuant to code, the Assistant Clerk of Counsel is a direct employee of the council. In order to hire her, this resolution would be necessary for enactment here at a public meeting.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.